Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith, the Mayor of the City of Vader. It's my privilege and honor to welcome all of you present this evening to this regularly scheduled City Council meeting. And we're especially grateful to have all of our elected officials present with us as well. We'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And would invite our City Council to engage in our roll call.
Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daley?
Mayor.
Joe Schein?
Present.
Excuse me. Ruth Creer?
Present.
And Judy Costello?
Present.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. Okay. With that, a complete quorum, we'll proceed. You'll note that we have invocation on our agenda. However, as you will also note, on item two, the Council is going to discuss the concept of the invocation later. So I have felt it would probably be appropriate, given the Council's interest in this matter, to defer that event until you've had a chance to come to a conclusion regarding it. I hope the Council's okay with that.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll proceed now with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would invite all to please rise. Mrs. Costello, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just hope you're not too distracted by the flashing light there, but at least it's not a red light district. We'll proceed with the Mayor's report. You'll note that I put the report on the Fourth of July Celebration Committee. Before I engage in that report, though, I'd be remiss if I didn't start with a report on the May Day festivities that are coming up on May 4th, if I'm not mistaken. And then we have a number of residents in our community who are diligent in supporting and orchestrating that event. And I'm sure they would be thrilled if we had a huge turnout for that event this year. So we're looking forward to that. The Council has authorized and supports both those events, but in particular, we sponsor the Fourth of July event. And one of those pre-event things is this year, we're going to have a committee. And I've identified four individuals who've expressed interest in serving on that committee. And I would serve on it as well, so I'd be number five. It's not a conflict of interest. But we anticipate having a meeting of that committee on Monday. And there are many good ideas emerging in the run-up to that committee meeting. So we're excited about that, and we'll keep you advised. But I can tell you that the fireworks will likely be purchased. I don't see our fireworks representative here tonight, but he's done his research and is about to make the purchase. Okay. So with that, are there any questions on that? Bring them. The next item will be the official swearing-in of our new planning committee member, who was confirmed in our last council meeting. And so we have present with us Mr. Scott Gross. And we have your, the document is right here, the office, so I will come forward. After this, we'll see Vader history. So Scott, if you don't mind raising your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Scott Gross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington.
And the state of laws of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of the Vader City Planning Committee.
Of the Vader City Planning Committee.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
And the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, oh, here, why don't you go ahead and sign this while you're standing here. Can I?
I did. I'm going to watch the mayor sign it, too. I'll get that from him afterwards.
Okay. All right. Okay. One last item that occurred to me in my conversation yesterday and didn't get on the agenda was I feel compelled to inform the Council that you're probably already aware that the city has a current comprehensive plan. It's probably seventeen years old or so.
It's nine years old.
Well, it was modified, yeah. But every seven years, it's supposed to be preshened. And so it's that time again. And we have a deadline of the end of 2017 to engage in that. And we've had previous conversations relating to this topic, but in our last conversation, I think you were informed that we were going to try and get grant funding that is usually available to little communities like ours to cover the cost of that. Because a comprehensive plan update could cost from twenty to forty thousand dollars, depending on the complexity of it. And it was covered by grant funding the last time, in fact, first time and the last time. But our research informs us that the monies that have been available to little cities like ours has dried up in the State of Washington. So there is not no money available to this. So it's going to create a considerably serious issue for us if we're going to accomplish this. And we, our city planner, Gary Cooper, stands ready to do this project for us. It was one of the objectives that he was to meet as we retained his services. He's demonstrating a little frustration that the city is going to have to deal with the finances to cover the costs of that activity. So it takes, I would estimate, probably six to eight months for this project to be completed. And it's, it would be, I have a feeling the state is going to hear from small cities like ours when other communities discover that there is no funding available. So I have a feeling there's going to be an uproar throughout the State of Washington, which may prompt them to delay or extend the deadline for this. But that's speculation. So just to share that with you so that you're informed and can begin to give that some consideration. Any comments or questions? With that, that concludes the Mayor's report. Now we'll turn the time over to the Council members for a council report.
Well, I'm very happy to say that somebody got the word about our water system, that they have finally begun to flush the fire hydrants by law. They started the day before yesterday. I don't know how many hydrants he flushed. I do know that I seen him flush three of them. So I'm a little bit happier to know that maybe we won't have this stuff in our water system anymore. I'm not the only one complaining. The church was complaining, and there were other people complaining also. I think this is ridiculous, because I was a water certified by the State of Washington years and years ago. And I do have a little knowledge. But at least they're, they are now flushing the system. I don't know how far he got yesterday. Thank you.
Well, I think I would have been startled had you not made mention of that. So I think we need to acknowledge the city administration that ensured that your request was conveyed. And so I commend you for your attention to it, and commend the City Council for following up on it.
I'd like to add one thing, too, that Fred Terry came in and talked to me at my store. He said that it is done quarterly, and that typically twice a year, if not quarterly, and that they have been doing it for the last, in the last couple of months. And typically, they do half of the city, and then they do the other half of the city. They may have neglected calling us, which would have been nice to say that they were doing something, because sometimes it does create particles in the water when they're doing it, or whatever. So he did, Fred did come in and talk to me also.
And thank you for that reporting, because I think I had predicted that we would discover that the Lewis County Department was doing that. So thank you for that verification. But since we don't want to repeat, as you mentioned, a Michigan episode in the Little Towne City, it's best to be safe. I'm sorry. And we have Mr. Tim Elsie, who's with us, and I'm sure he would have confirmed that it has been done as well. So with that.
I would also like to report on, Andy and I went to dinner Tuesday night together. Yes. We went to the AWC meeting in Toledo.
Do we have a newspaper reporting?
And it was a lovely dinner. It was catered. It was really very nice.
Love was involved?
Love was involved, yes. We were there and accompanied by seven other city representatives from all the other communities. Very informative. Everybody should go to one of those. I mean, they just have so much to talk about, and their communities, and what's going on, and how much their, you know, the water and sewers, and I mean, just everything.
How many people were in attendance?
There were about twenty, I think about twenty-two of us, and seven cities. So it was a good turnout.
Thank you for representing the community.
Yes.
I've been to several of them, and it is very informative for council people to go to things like that for AWC and municipal research meetings.
It is.
Very, very informative.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Any other reports from the Council at this time? Okay, then let's proceed. At this time, our agenda shows that we will have a report from Mr. Tim Elsie, who's kind of Public Works Director.
Thank you, guys, for having me here tonight. And my name is Tim Elsie. I'm the Public Works Director and County Engineer for Lewis County. And I'm generally here to talk to you about the Vader and Chana Valley Water System, but not tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the solid waste disposal district. And I think we sent some documentation early, so hopefully it's in your packet, or you've had a chance to see it in the past. But just to give this Council, and I see a lot of people here that have been here for a lot of years, but just to give this Council a history of how the disposal district was created and how we do solid waste disposal in Lewis County. The disposal district was actually created in 1992. And the reason why, well, first of all, Lewis County does solid waste a little bit differently than most of the other thirty-nine counties in the state. There are three counties that have a solid waste disposal district, and we're one of the counties that does. The reason it was created was because the landfill in Centrellia was determined to be a site that was going to need to be cleaned up. It was later turned into a superfund site, and so it needed to be closed. At that point, there were three communities in the county that had not had ordinances requiring the residents to take waste to that solid waste facility. That was Winlock, Toledo, and PL, I'm sorry, Naperville. And because of that, neither of those three, none of those three communities were involved in the cleanup as potentially liable parties, or PLPs. So there were two groups that were created along that time. One was the Centrellia Landfill Cleanup Group, CLCG, and the other was the Disposal District. So although those three communities weren't involved in the cleanup group, because they weren't potentially liable parties, every other municipality in the county, plus Lewis County, were considered to be potentially liable parties, and they were part of the Centrellia landfill cleanup. However, those three communities did join all of the other communities to become part of the disposal district. And that's a good thing. And the reason why that's a good thing is because all the communities and the county put together a flow control ordinance that said that all of the waste in their communities needed to go through the transfer station that was going to be created in Centrellia. The reason that's good is because we had to have a steady revenue source in order to be able to pay for whatever cleanup was going to be necessary for the landfill. And so those communities joined with all the other communities to say that we're going to ensure that you're going to have the steady revenue stream. So back in, the group was created, and the original interlocal agreement was signed in 1992. And it was for twenty-five years. And it has been incredibly successful. A very, very successful venture in that, first of all, the original tipping fee rates were set at ninety-five dollars a ton. Now, a lot of communities back in that timeframe did something similar to that. They set tipping fee rates high, because they, none of us knew what the disposal cost or the cleanup cost were going to be once we started cleaning up and closing our landfills. What wound up happening then was in 1997, we were able to lower those tipping fees down to eighty-two dollars a ton, which, when you look at the communities around us, not Calitz County, Calitz has their own landfill, so their tipping fees are less than Lewis County. But any community around us that doesn't have their own landfill were very, very competitive, and were lower than the areas around us. So that eighty-two dollar per ton tipping fee lasted until 2014. And, or, yeah, 2014. And at that point, we raised those rates back up to ninety dollars per ton, still less than what they were originally set in 1994, and still less than most of the others around us. So I'm not coming to you with any requests tonight, but what I am coming to you is to let you know that that interlocal agreement is coming due. And we will be going out to all the communities with virtually the same interlocal agreement. And I'm just going out to all the City Councils and letting you know that this will be coming. We will be asking for that interlocal agreement to continue. What I've been asked at more than one City Council so far is, great, but try not to change that interlocal agreement very much. And so we're going to do that. Why mess with something that has worked really well? There are requirements if cities don't join the disposal district. Part of that is that each city would have to come up with their own solid and hazardous waste management plan. That's a six-year plan that we have to turn into Department of Ecology every year. The disposal district now does that, and we do that under the interlocal agreement and under the disposal district RCWs. But, and actually, we're just done going through that process. And so we have one created. But if any of the communities choose not to join the disposal district, then of course you'll have to handle your own solid and hazardous waste management plan. But again, just wanted to say, come in, let you guys know where we were going, what we were doing. Reiterate that solid waste disposal in Lewis County is a little bit different than the rest of the state, but the interlocal agreement that was created twenty-five years ago has worked incredibly well, and we hope to continue that for at least another twenty-five years. And I will be back to you, and we'll be sending you an agreement in the future for you to look at and sign. It will be, hopefully, not too much of a monumental task to get eleven different attorneys to look at it and sign onto it with all of the different municipalities. But that's part of the reason that I'm here now, is to say that we're all in this together. And so the decisions that we make will affect us all in the future, and it has been just a real success story.
Excellent. Any questions you'd like to ask, well, from the City Council?
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Jim. Very good. Let's proceed now with the agenda approval for tonight's meeting. And I don't have any changes or additions. Any members of the Council would like to make any additions? Okay. Then we will wait for the Council motion.
I make a motion to approve City Council meeting agenda for February 28, 2016.
April.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
April, I just read that. April the 28th, 2016.
We've heard the motion by Mrs. Costello to approve tonight's agenda for April 28th, as written. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If that motion is carried. Now the minutes for our previous meeting on the 14th. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve, oh, I can hear myself. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 14th, 2016.
Okay, Mr. Schein submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. You have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. We now voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the end of April 2016 in the amount of sixty-five hundred, sixty-five dollars and four cents, plus the amendment of six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, for a total for the end of April 2016 in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay. Mr. Schein, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Schein. You heard a second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Time for public comment.
I can.
We need to, you sign up if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to say something, yeah. Have to be a wafer one.
Uh-huh. Go ahead, podium, and introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
I'm Addie McBe. I came to the council meetings. I've been taking care of my brother for the last year and a half. But before that, I dutifully attended our council meetings and have been looking for a place to live here in Vader. I live and own in Castle Rock, and I have a shop in Castle Rock now. I've known Judy. I've known Andy. I met the mayor, and he welcomed me here. And, of course, I eat at Jason's, so I guess I can cover it almost everybody. I know Hallie. I'm so impressed. And I brought a friend who unfortunately just lost his wife of fifty-nine years about six months ago. And he's looking for a good place to live. And I said, you gotta come with me to the meeting. That's Buck Savage. Wave your hand, Buck. And I think this is a great place. You don't know the difference, but I can tell you in all honesty. And Buck, he goes to every council meeting in Castle Rock, as do I, until the last year and a half. And he could tell you firsthand, and I can tell you, it's such a difference. And like Mr. Garcia, that you get the involvement of everyone, our mayor here and all the council. You get the involvement of the entire county working together. I am, like, totally impressed. I've read all about you on LinkedIn. Is that enough?
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Well, then, that concludes our public comment. Take it. So we'll now proceed with our official city business. Item number one, the Council to discuss the city street topics. And I'd labor please to have the Washington State Department of Transportation Representative, Mr. Rick Kenniston, who's going to give us a brief report, I believe, tonight. And Rick, we'd invite you to take the podium.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you for inviting me to tonight's meeting. Haven't been out here for a long time, so. I'm Rick Kenniston. I'm with the Washington State Department of Transportation, Southwest Region Headquarters in Vancouver. And we cover all of southwest Washington, all the way up through Lewis County, and then way out towards Golden Dale in the east and out to the coast, out on One O'Leary, Conge Beach and all that stuff. So tonight, I hope we can have a two-way conversation about this. I know you've sent a few emails to the DOT asking about the two crosswalks in town, the one at A Street and one at D Street. And we're willing to talk to you about, you know, what do you want to talk about? I see a flashing light over here. Is that any kind of a reference to what we're doing tonight?
It is.
So.
It's a bit early.
Now, so first of all, one of the questions you asked was, can you get the crosswalks repainted? And that's absolutely, we have a resurfacing project coming through here this summer, a chip seal project. And when we do the resurfacing projects, we redo all the paint stripes and all the crosswalks that are there. So, and those will be done in the, it's called thermoplastic. It's a heated plastic that's put down, it lasts five times longer than paint. So those will be there for a long time. So the other question is some kind of signing you're thinking of, or lighting on these crosswalks. And so today, let's see, the one at D Street, crosswalk there has pedestrian signs on each direction saying pedestrians at the crosswalk. The one at A Street has no sign. I think you're looking for a combination of signing or lighting. I think there used to be lighting at the D Street one when the school was there. That was taken out, because those are specifically, schools' zones have to have lighting. Any other crosswalks, it's optional. So from where we're coming from, our limited budget, we like to start with the problem. And if there is a problem, an accident problem, or pedestrian getting hit by cars, or close calls, or something like that, we'll start addressing the problem from the ground up and build up from there to totally solve the problem. So we always like to start with the lowest thing, with the lowest cost for everybody, because we have a limited budget, too. And we're willing to look at, today, there's two signs out there that have the pedestrian that has an arrow right at the crosswalk. We're thinking of putting one on each side, facing each way, so back-to-back where they are today, so that from each direction, it points right to the crosswalk. And the new signs are way brighter yellow than they used to be. So, and we have a whole new federal standard for the yellow signs. And these are just super bright at night. So that's, one proposal is to do that at the empty one at A. The lights, we're just, we can't pay for that. We can't just add one of these on top of the sign. They have to be kind of a, it's highway, so they have to be a certain specification. They have to, it'd have to be solar powered, or hook them up to PUD power. But generally, out in places like this, we do solar-powered ones. And then you're starting, you gotta do the new poles, and it starts getting really trendy, and we'd have to rely on you guys to pay for that and maintain those. We're willing to put up the signs, whatever signs that we agree to, but if you want to lit, lit up signs, I think that's, that would have to be on your dime. So what do you think? Go ahead.
You asked me what I think. Oh. What are the chances, since you're going to do chip seal, and you're going to put down new vinyl across there, what's the chances in LED lighting across that?
LED on the ground?
On the ground.
We could not, yeah, we could not pay for that.
Okay. You wanted to have a conversation?
Yeah, I, well, it's quite, totally.
Sure.
And we'll work with you on ways to get funding for this stuff. I mean, that's kind of, it's kind of your decision, but the funding part, we just, we can only go so far.
Sure.
You can pay for signs. That's basically it. So.
Okay. So we're not going to throw that out yet.
Before anybody came into town, except for Jason, we used to have lights up at the school at 506 and D Street for crossing lights, and even had a crosswalk. Now there's nothing. But that is a good place, one good place, and then the other good place for the city would be right down here in A and 506.
Right.
Very simple. That's only two that I feel that where everybody really socializes in those two locations, because I know that the cost. Because I know that the cost, you can't put it on never block all the way.
Right. Go ahead, sir.
What's off the top of your head, the cost of solar powered spec out?
I'd say fifteen thousand, like that, times two if you want them at each intersection. It's pretty spendy pretty quick. I think the LEDs would be spendy as well.
No harbor freight.
Excuse me?
No harbor freight. State approved.
Yes, sir.
I wonder why if there were existing lights and signals at that crosswalk, while there were four school zone, why did the state not modify the light system for a standard crosswalk rather than the school zone? So that there was still some sort of lighting at, at a major crosswalk in town on the highway.
I think it's because there's always, it's a school, a school drop-off zone. There's no school crossings. I think when it's an official school crossing, when you got the schools right there, you've got the pedestrian, the kids crossing signs, those, I think those, if it's a marked cross, it has to be lit. Any other lighting on any other crosswalk is optional.
So there should already be lighting available or the?
There's no school. So that's why they were taken out.
Understood, but there should be the electrical still there with the siding.
Possibly.
We wouldn't have to.
I think they were solar.
They were solar.
Solar, solar, so they're, now are they?
Well, I think, I think our question, our big concern is, is we have pedestrians on A Street, lots of heavy traffic for that thing. And we have children at both A and D. Those are both school bus stops. And we have the little guys. Not, I'm not talking about our fourth and fifth graders. We have the little kindergarten people. So that's what our big concern is right now is school bus stops, both at A and D and our, our community citizens.
Sure. And that's why we like to start, you know, we're willing to put in the, the back-to-back pedestrian signs with arrows at both intersections. So that you can see it from both directions as you drive. And then they'd be on both sides of the street, going both ways. They're called gated when they're on both sides of the street, either direction. So there's actually four signs per crosswalk.
I mean, that's going to increase our crosswalk, especially A Street. I mean, it's a straight stretch, no return. So the only, the only concern for me on, on any of this is the rise going up to D Street because there's that bus stop there. But I think the signage is, is great, great, the gate signage.
And it's, we like to go for, you know, build up. There's actually, looked at the five-year crash history and there's been six crashes in town within the city limits in the last five years. None at B and one at A. There's not a big problem that we have to, we're addressing here to spend a lot of money on. So we'd like to do with a lower cost solution to kind of build up, see if they're effective, you know, if it's, if it's meeting your needs.
We just don't want to wait till someone gets ran over before we put up.
Well, that's kind of the whole thing. You know, we probably said this before, any marked crosswalk gives people a false sense of security that they can just walk and they don't look. And actually, there are more collisions, pedestrian collisions at marked crosswalks than there are non-marked. Because every intersection in the state is a legal crosswalk. So the marked ones aren't any more special than an unmarked one. It's just people give a false sense of security. And you know, you might not look both ways. You might just go. And sometimes the drivers are fifty feet away and they don't know whether to stop or go.
I can speak from, you know, for only a short time that I've been in Castle Rock, because I'm going to be up here now. I'm really looking quickly. And for both the business and the home. And as I have in Castle Rock, we have a highway running through both, you know. And I can speak that we have no lighted except for the children. But you know, those children out here come to us as a winlock. And it's almost like having a school. And maybe the businesses here will work with the mayor, and I'll be a business too, to give some money. And then you're going to have to tell us what is cost effective for the children too. But the rest of the town, we don't have anything fancy. And if it couldn't afford, we put in the solar strippers that you know, on your highway by the city hall. It never got lighted or whatever it's supposed to do, it doesn't light at all. So solar has not been affected for us. And the rest of the town, I mean Huntington, which then goes by schools and it's well taken care of with all of that. But our major shopping, if you would drive down there, coming from the I-5 exit 49 down, it's all just regular. And, but now the children are well taken care of. And some of the children here go, you know, on school buses. And I think businesses should really now, and I would, I would before I move here, actually, because I'll be here. The, I'll head that up. I'll talk to the mayor. But I'd head up gathering enough money to do what we need to do.
Yeah, so I mean, we're willing to, whatever you decide that you want to do, we're willing to do it as long as it meets some kind of national or state standards for the highway.
May I ask you what the urgency is for putting the signs up? Do we have to wait until the chip seal is done or we could get those right away?
Yeah, that's, we can do that separate from my office.
Okay, could you put that in your schedule for right away?
Sure.
That's good.
It takes them like thirty days to order the signs.
Well, I think that's a wonderful idea, don't you guys?
Absolutely. We appreciate your responsiveness to this. It's most impressive.
Well, it's kind of on us, next to the second thing, which if I have time.
We did have a couple of comments with the council.
Look at this one.
Hi, I'll be real brief. We also have our community park on A Street that's straight down there that kids and teenagers go to. I don't know if this has anything to do with the price of tea in China, but it increases the use of that street because they're coming to play basketball, et cetera, et cetera. And then I have a little selfish request. Could we turn off that yellow blinking light for right now?
I thought it might be a distraction.
That's kind of, that's kind of our bottom.
Oh, I apologize. No, don't take him for this. Probably.
Is that people get so numb to watch the light?
I didn't know it came from you.
Yeah, just set it on for. It's kind of like, what you call the rapid flashing ones that you push the button and the flash goes on. Those, you know, you have to do something. It's flashing at you when you drive by. These are on all twenty-four hours a day, so you just kind of drive by.
One of the things that I would suggest since if just signage, Winlock and other places, they have like flags that you can carry from inside.
Oh, yeah. Seen that Stevenson shows?
To increase your, your visual.
How many people are going to grab it, go across and?
Well, if you're scared enough, then.
I've seen they have a five gallon bucket on each side of the crosswalk.
They have that in Winlock, they do, and they use that regularly.
One or two on each side.
Yes, it's just so you can be.
Leader has it by the post office.
We don't have those. Just generally.
Yes, perfect.
Did you, did you have it last?
Okay, I got two questions. Number one is, I live up on A Street. And I was one that almost got hit by a car, 506, by a car coming up the hill. Now, the light that you're planning on putting up on A Street, is it going to be far enough that?
There's no light.
Well, sorry. Is it going to be up far enough that so the guys up the hill go up the hill or see it?
So that's a different set of signs. The ones we're, I'm talking about are right at the crosswalk. They're, they're, they point right to the crosswalk on both sides of the road saying, pedestrians right here, you know, big yellow signs. Those are pedestrian ahead signs. Do we have any of those coming into town?
No.
That's another option. I mean, a supplement, you could say.
Are they free?
Free to us, not to you.
We're into signage, come on.
Possibly.
Possibly?
It'd be interesting at A Street because you got the railroad crossing right there. So I don't know where that sign would go with all that busy stuff right there. Because there's not much room between the railroad crossing and the, and A Street.
There's two hundred feet plus.
Two blocks.
Yeah. So if your pedestrian ahead sign would probably be sitting in front of the other pedestrian sign.
Okay.
Since we've got him here, can I ask him a different sign question?
I'm sure you can.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I don't want you to leave before the meeting's over, not have a chance to ask you. So we need to put up signs for our weight limits and things. Do we need to go through you guys to put them along that highway or?
Even if it goes on the highway, by the way.
Even though it's in the city limits?
We'd just like to know about it.
Okay, okay.
And I wouldn't require a permit, but.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can give you the name of the person or I'll just give you my card.
That's a very good question. And I think it's time for us to address that.
And may I ask an off-the-ball question too? Community interest here, this is community, I'm sure they're all wanting to know. Are you going to fix the bridge coming from?
Lachamis Creek?
Yeah.
Is that what it's called? Are you just gonna?
We're fixing the structure that's broken underneath, not replacing it. It was, it was one of our top bridges in our region to get replaced and it didn't get the funding. So I don't know if it's within ten years. It should be, it definitely should be replaced.
And what do you do? Are you involved in the chip seal itself?
Not.
You're not, so you would not?
The LSP office, the project engineering office is doing that project.
Okay. Because I have a question with what they're going to do with leftovers at the end of the day at their project. And it's kind of like when you do asphalt, is there like leftover stuff and?
We are using taxpayer money, so.
Well, I didn't want you to give it away.
You can talk to the contractor.
Contractors, okay, that's fine. No, thank you very much.
When, when they do the chip seal, do they do, I know they repaint, do they do any ditch re, I'm just curious, I mean, nothing like that?
I see driving along the highway, they white marked all potholes and places that I assume they're going to repair.
Before we do the chip seal, if there's a bunch of cracks, they grind that out and put, you know, some new asphalt and then chip over the whole thing. Try to get a good base.
And that'll be another contract that you guys hire.
That'll be with the same contractor. They'll do that first and then they'll chip seal the whole thing.
So there won't be asphalt?
Yeah. Small quantities here and there.
They do sections at a time? What, where they break it down to one lane each way with pilot vehicles?
Yeah. I think they can do like three miles a day with the chip seal. It's pretty fast. Maybe even more than that.
Would you be able to get from the highway through town then, right?
Yeah, yeah. Might even more than that.
Well, I, I want to, because I, my job is watch the clock and we have nine other total items on tonight's agenda. Does council want to continue this conversation?
Were we going to talk about the speed bump on A?
Did you have a second? Was that part of your presentation?
No.
I didn't ask him about it. We were just going to jump on him when he got here and ask him.
We don't have any, we don't have any speed bumps on the state highway, I can tell you that. They can't, there are things like grounded, we call those rumble strips that are on the center line, that if there's a real problem with people coming into town really fast and like a couple hundred feet before the, the speed limit's lowered from fifty to thirty-five when you go across these, you know, something like that, to get people to notice.
That'd be nice coming down the road.
Yeah, something like that. But then again, if you have residents there, then they are loud and every car would make that noise. That person living there would not be very happy. That's our experience.
Well, I, I know one of the takeaways that I've heard here is that you mentioned that you would be helpful, you'd be willing to assist in our efforts to find funding for the projects.
Yeah, so that's another thing I was quickly on that, we are doing right now called corridor sketches, every highway corridor in, in our region, where our planning department, our local programs engineer and myself come out and talk to you guys about, you talked about your comprehensive plan. What's your zero to twenty-year plan for Seventh Street, you know, Highway 506? We can give you a lot of ideas on, you know, like, I mean, if you have a problem with speed, there's ways of slowing people down, like putting a median with the planted median down the middle or narrower lanes, things, things like that. There's just a whole bunch of things you can do. You know, if you want to redo your parking sidewalks, we don't have the money to do that, but we can help you plan that out and find the ground opportunities, that kind of thing. That's what local programs does, is they look for the ground opportunities for you guys, for the small towns. So that's what we, we'll come out next year, later this year to talk, you know. What are your ideas? What's, what's your vision for Seventh Street?
All right, very good. Well, thank you. Any other questions? Not. Well, then we, again, we thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to the chip seal.
I gave my card once.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Well, let's now proceed with item one A, council discussion on the speed bump on A Street. If I recall correctly, we were going to do some cost analysis on that.
On those speed bumps, you know where I live. I'd like to see the speed bumps, but they will not solve the problem because they start from all the way at Mrs. Bloom's house. And the speed bumps wouldn't do a bit of good except it's cost is money. And then they go in front of Judy's place there and the post office, and they're still doing sixty miles an hour. I don't care what anybody says. When he's sitting there at the church, sure, just as slow as you can think of. But when he's not there, both ways. And so I am against speed bumps. That's because of the reason of what's happening. And I know the police cannot patrol at twenty-four seven. Period. And I can't see us spending all that money for speed bumps, which isn't going to be cheap. That's my hitherto.
Would a camera?
I just suggest stop signs, you know, at least that's a fence that can be.
Stop signs with the camera, the church camera on the stop sign, then you'd be able to. But they'll run a stop sign and draw the camera and then you'll be able to stay.
Unfortunately, I have to remind the public that this isn't a give and take. When we have a presentation, there's more latitude there, but we, we can't turn into a cross-examination. This is the council discussion. You get to listen. And if you want to say something, just get my attention and the council will let you speak. That's how we roll here. So with that, I'm sorry about, but you were saying the signs and?
I, I made the suggestion of using a stop sign on, on that direction just, just because it's an infensible thing to run. And it's something that, that can be done easy. And I think we probably have a couple extra ones at the shop. Something that would be easy to do, less cost, give that a try.
My opinion about the stop sign, that is easier to stay farther away and enforce. You can still see. But with the speed, you have to be in line of sight in order for the radar to work. So with the stop sign, it would allow us to hide and still be able to see the stop sign and take at people that want to run through us.
All right. Well, I know you mentioned the stop sign at the corridor of Eighth and D.
Right.
We had them, but we put them back if council wanted them back.
Is there anything we have to notify anybody when we start putting stop signs up again?
You know, there should be some kind of flagage or something saying, you know, all revision, alter, alteration.
That's exactly what I was going to say. You have to make note that there's a revision ahead.
But that's easy.
We have a lot of stop signs in the shop. Not good stop signs that are really usable, but we do, we may still have some. Yeah, we only need, what, four?
So, but.
It's your house.
But one of the speeders don't live anymore on, on Fifth Street. And you don't see him hitting the bell like he used to. So we slowed it down a little bit.
But if I can remind the council that the topic is the request from the church for a speed bump.
Correct.
Do we want to pursue a speed bump or not?
Jill, did you do some research on the cost?
I attempted to do some research. The first thing I tried to do was find regulation for what, what is required as far as a speed bump. Like is there a size? Is there, you know, the signage? What? I have not been able to find anything. I need help. I don't know where to look. I've tried state stuff. I've tried, nothing in the city codes that I can find. So I need help.
You know, a lot of places I see has a speed bump ahead or the signs just says.
We just have to, as a city, we need to do whatever regulation there is. And I don't know who regulates that. There's talks, talk about speed bumps, but nothing that I have been able to find about what the specifics require. I need to be able to talk to somebody with more knowledge in that area. I'm guessing a city engineer or somebody. But that's money that costs to even call and talk to them. So I didn't want to do that without council's approval.
So I, I think that the way it takes and his suggestion, you know, putting stop signs is something that you can sit far enough way back and you can take it people that run, and I think that's cost effective, it's something that we can do pretty quickly.
We don't have the equipment for a public works plan, nor do we have the, uh, resources to make our own speed bumps according to the regulations. And this is why I'm against it, because I don't think it's gonna help the problem, I think the problem is, like the stop signs would help. And so I am against the speed bumps for the cost of the city.
Well, could we put in a motion of some sort? Would someone care to, stop sign motion?
I can make the motion that we don't do the, uh, speed bumps and we put stop signs in.
Okay, so you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to defer, uh, further action on the speed bump resolution and install the stop signs at.
A, A and the eight.
And do you want to add another location, corner eight and D?
Uh, the corner of A and D would also be.
I don't think we need it on this street, the stop sign.
No.
That's two.
I'm sorry, are you saying eighth and D isn't Boyd, D isn't the, eighth and D?
We took out a stop sign there.
Eight and six.
A couple of years ago and it's the one kids all walk up at from the school bus stop, man, it's just gotten crazy there too.
Okay, then, so we got both locations? So you submitted the motion, oh, you submitted the motion, uh, so we have a second for Mr. David. Any additional commentary?
I kinda wonder if Pastor Tracy wasn't just, that was the first thing that came to his mind maybe was the speed bump and hadn't really thought about the stop sign. So I think he will be pleased, I don't know that for a fact, but I would think that that would be.
Kind of challenges for those of us with large trucks and stuff, just give them something to challenge.
I think that might have just been a thought pattern.
Yeah, I think the stop signs.
Well, then, okay, uh, well then it may be time to put this matter to a vote then. All in favor of the resolution as noted and seconded, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, excellent, thank you for that expeditious action. Alright, it's now, uh, from our previous two city council meetings, uh, the council will discuss the concept of invocation at city council meetings. I know that, um, this is a topic that is individualized with each council as it's constituted. And I, I know that I was contacted by Pastor Durham after the last city council meeting. I, I think he may have contacted a number of council members, so I would invite the council to engage in whatever discussion you may want to entertain on the matter.
Well, I don't mind going first, um, I brought this up in January at one of the meetings and I, um, feel that um, we should not do it at our council meetings, we've never done it before, not that things can't change, but I just disapprove of the mixture of, um, church and state. Um, I did speak with the seven other cities that were at the meeting the other night and not one of them do invocation at their meetings, that was uh, an opportunity, we had to talk about that, so it was also, um, something they did not do.
Okay, if I want to just go right to left?
Sure.
As long as I've been on the city council, I've been in the city of Vader. We used to have a full house here all the time and a lot of people in town during my period of time did not necessarily dislike, but they didn't wanna spend the time with the invocation. And I heard that from a lot of the people and I still here today, and so I'm against it. And I would make a motion and we abolish it.
Okay, you jumped right into the emotion, um, well, the city council member can do that. Uh, well, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to discontinue, uh, the invocation at the Vader City Council meetings. Do we have a second for that motion?
Joe, did you wanna weigh in on this?
No, you can do that afterward.
I can't, I can't, I can't during the motion.
I, I will second the motion then.
Okay, we've got a second for Mrs. Custel, with that, now the council can continue to weigh in on it for final commentary. Did you want to have your votes heard?
Uh, I've, for the last two times the council's voted on this, um, we've always had council members that were interested in, in having prayer before the meeting, and I've said both times that I will support any council member that chooses to pray before a council meeting, uh, I don't believe it's a violation of church and state. In fact, I think it's constitutionally protected, in fact, the Supreme Court has said so, however, if the council is not interested in praying anymore, uh, I will support that decision.
Okay, uh, do you want to weigh in on that?
I, I support the decision also, I, I, uh, I think it, it keeps people from, from coming. I'm, I believe in separation of church and state too, I think before the meeting is fine, but after we hit the gavel, it's, it's not so fine.
Alrighty, well, you've had your say, um, I personally was supportive of it. Supported the, the well of the majority of the council, but it is a legislative body and it is uncounseled prerogative to weigh in on such things. And so, um, let's go ahead and put the matter to a vote. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so that matter, measure carries, motion carries four to zero. Alright, okay, um, let's proceed to item number three. Council to discuss storm drains and I and I into our sewer lines.
Yes.
And, um, we had a delightful storm pattern in this past week that, um, as I stood watching it, I thought now would have been an ideal time to have had a team out there analyzing our, uh, the storm water drainage throughout this city, but we didn't, so I, I think this is a continuation of discussion on the challenges we have in monitoring and controlling our surface water flow into our three lagoon waste treatment system.
Well, when these people were in here, the sewers and all that stuff, I thought they was going around checking that the storm drain going into the sewer system, the only thing I know of that could be doing the same thing is what's happening to the water on five oh six all the way from E Street on the north side and the south side because that's water is not going in the Olaquaw anymore, the storm water. Something tells me that somebody has dug up some of the old, they aren't transite lines, it was all clay tile. Right in front of the post office is one of them that's sinking. And then Bernie, the northern dug up the pipe down by the railroad. And now since they done that, no water in winter time is going over the Olaquaw where it used to be. And so, all the thing I can say is that, where is it going? But nobody, nobody can give me a correct answer. Now that's on both sides of the street because on this side here, the water went down and then it went into the ditch that went this way, not this way. And the same thing on five oh six, the water used to go straight down underneath the railroad tracks, into the Olaquaw, it's not going there anymore.
That's the pipe that you.
That's the pipe I'm talking about, yeah, we just didn't get looked at, and there's, there's places that the water backs up there because it's not going out there, it backs up and it comes out all over the place. I found like where water comes up on high flow days, water comes up out of the ground and when it recedes, it comes back out of the ground, it's got like an artesian well around there in places, so.
I believe it.
And I think, I don't know if it was from the railroad, but I know that it, it occurred after the, like, the PUD road, road underneath the.
Yeah, well, it.
The road there for, for the industrial.
You remember when the under railroad tracks there, the crossing, new crossing, it's been many years ago. But I'm positive there was a water line that went underneath the railroad tracks, I'm positive. In fact, I'd even bet a little money that.
There is.
But that's history, and I know that there is a sewer line that goes across five oh six at Main Street. And in that sewer manhole, Tommy Spain and his son years and years ago had to put in an eight inch PVC pipe to the old gray line that went this way and this way because it broke and water was going like the devil into the sewer, and that was many years ago now. And as, as far as I know, when they lifted the manhole and when you were down at that time, that piece of pipe is about this PVC, PVC pipe. It's about this long, go from one side of the manhole to the other side and it blocked it off. That was taken care of because we found out that the line had broke many years ago and years of storm water going in down the sewer. But they fixed that.
Well, my, oh, excuse me, Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, uh, history, I'm sure you're accurate that we could probably identify some locations where the pipes have failed. And, um, we should study what the impact would be by fixing those two locations.
Yeah, well, you were down, excuse me, you were down there the day that Ross McCall and I were down there and.
Well, I've never seen anything like it, it was just like three rivers coming together. Yeah, but they were supposed to have fixed that, so.
They fixed it alright.
Well, well, my question is, um, if it's not helping by doing the side sewer projects as ecology said, so, um, what happens to the rest of us who are sitting here, I have three properties that fall in that category and believe me, I'm not anxious to jump out there and dig up all my yard and the expense.
Now, this, the first phase was for the low income individuals, uh, there could have been and maybe could have been if we want to and if someone jumped in, Jill, and corrected this perception, but it was my understanding that that was the first phase. There would be a second phase in which, uh, funding would be made available for those who weren't low income. And, um, they would be given an opportunity to have their lines fixed as well.
Well, I guess my question is though is, aren't they supposed to be taking out clay tile, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Not PVC pipe?
No, they would do the, the video to see if it's PVC and if it was after a certain date, they would not.
Well, then why on the last go around was there PVC pipe dug up on a couple properties that were involved in that and it is sitting at a location? Jill's hands up. I mean, I. The way it worked was that if the line was less than twenty years old, they installed cleanouts, if there weren't cleanouts, and they tested the line, if the line was sound, they didn't do anything else to it. If the line was not sound, they replaced it, whether it was clay, PVC, transite, whatever, I don't know what the other options were, but if, so they tested them if they were newer than twenty years old.
That's the answer right there.
Another piece of history was down on by Hayden Hancock's place. Right by your place in the, way back in that field there, there was a fire, not fire hydrant, there was a. Yeah, there was a big, uh, tank down there that water, storm water was going into and going in right into the sewer line. Went right on into the sewer, I don't know if they ever fixed, fixed it or whether it's broke again or not, but this is what the engineers should be looking at, the history stuff.
Yeah, they, they did, I know in part, but, um, the obvious reality is that however much research they did, looking at their old historical records, uh, right now it appears that it didn't work. And so, we do have comment from a member of the public, does the council want to entertain that comment?
A suggestion, because we had the same problem in Castle, Buck probably knows the details more than I, because he's more of a manufacturer, later retired. But we couldn't afford to replace the pipes and they put, you might understand it Buck, because he understood that technical side, but they put a sleeve under those leaking pipes. And he, he dealt with that, um, until we can afford to take them out and it stops all leaky some properties. And it out mine.
Maybe we can talk after the meeting, uh, we'll find out what that sleeve is.
So, so do we have, do we have someone who is going to pay to have the pipe Jason's talking about or whatever?
I think it just needs to be.
It has been, yeah.
From the, from the.
From the, the east side to the west, they went and videotaped down to the break. And so we know where the break is at, but not on the other side of the, of the railroad tracks. So that hasn't been done, you're suggesting that maybe that'd be done?
Yeah, I'm, that's where the, the back of the water is, I mean, that, I know Vader has, uh, three or four different points that it flows into the Olaquaw and, um, the one by Justin's property down there, it flows great, the one in between ours and Floyd Carr's property flows out great, but the one by the bridge, it, it flows like a hose. Um, but never, when it rains real hard, it never gets any, any faster, so I know that there's.
And you know it was, it was, water was flowing out there.
It used to flow out so fast, it would hit the, it'd hit the river, it hit the Olaquaw. And now it's, it's just barely trickle out, you know, on a rainy day.
My sense is that it's time for the city, wait, oh, do you have a comment?
I did, but, um, I just wanted to remind council that, um, in the I and I project that we've done so far addressing the houses, we only addressed less than twenty percent of the houses in Vader. Um, and so to remember that, just because it hasn't made a huge difference doesn't mean that it didn't need to be done or doesn't mean that there aren't still ones out there that are worse, we just haven't found them yet, there's still eighty percent of the houses that haven't been checked. We know from, uh, smoke testing that was done back in, I think it was ninety-nine and two thousand, that there are several properties with their downspouts connected into the sewer system that have not been disconnected. It's illegal to have your downspouts and drainage go into the sewer system and, and some people don't even know that their spouts are in it, some do, they've told me that they know, but they don't, haven't done anything about it, but there are some that don't, don't know that that's connected in. So there's still a lot that can be done, I, I don't disagree with, um, what you're saying about, about that, um, drain down there as well. I think council has the authority, and correct me if I'm wrong mayor, but council has the authority to decide what you want, how you wanna go about addressing it, you just have to assign funds to it so that we know how that's gonna be paid for, 'cause we don't have it as a separate line item, you know, I and I work, is gonna be paid for this money, so council would have to consider, you know, if you wanna have someone come out and scope, you have to consider where that money, what line item that money's gonna come from, so just make sure you remember to think about that part of it too.
I don't, I don't think any of us here would think that tonight's conversation is gonna, you know, come up with a final solution, but this is part of, I, I think, our realization that if we're going to find a solution, we may need to engage in it internally in the city of Vader, which is so often the case in small cities, you have to do that yourselves because nobody is standing here with a bucket full of money to, to give to you to do it. because nobody is standing here with a bucket full of money to, to give to you to do it. And we've relied on these engineers for years now, and look where we're at.
Since, since we've scoped before, do we know the cost of bringing them out to scope? Or?
Well, I don't think scope, yes, we, I think we have a pretty good handle on the cost of it, it's not exorbitant. There is one entity who's willing to do it, I forget the name of it. He's a very helpful gentleman, whose job is to assist small cities like ours, and he'll come out and he'll do it. It'd take him six months probably to schedule it, because it's, it isn't his prime employment specialty, but what I'm saying is that we can do that, and I'm pretty sure it wouldn't break our budget. Yes, so that's a quick scoping.
Well, I'm just thinking, is any of the money from the side sewer projects, wasn't that all grant money? Can any of that be used to further look into the problem, or was, has that already been?
That's already been extended.
And we didn't find the problem, but we.
Well, we found some problems, but not.
Found some, but this obviously doesn't sound to me like. Mayor, can you have rubber boots?
Yes, I do.
This was not an all inclusive project, this, this grant was specific for a specific part of the problem, so there's, that has been addressed.
How long have we been dealing with this problem?
Since 2004, I would say.
At least.
Yeah, that's when a million or so dollars was spent to fix the piping on the southwest corner, certain quadrant of the community. These funds were focused primarily on the easterly portion and some northern sections of the community. But I'd say we only did two thirds of the total pipage in the city, and the side sewer was a separate project, that like Jill accurately points out, was the low income individuals first, and we would like to have done all of them, but there are people in any community who refuse to, to indulge in that. But who can know why, but I can tell you, we can't sit here and presume that it was a complete waste of time or money.
Right.
Because I know there were a goodly number of houses whose downspouts went into our sewer system. And I saw the improvements that they made on the one huge glaring fix past the corner of Ninth and D. I mean, that was outrageous. Then some other manholes, too. So, it wasn't a complete waste of time, but I think that if we were to isolate the locations, like Andy knows where some are at, Jason obviously does as well, and I know up on F Street, we're going to find a major.
I mean, if we can't get rid of the water, it's got to go somewhere, so.
Right. A little Yankee ingenuity would go a long ways, and we could then target those locations. Now, let me tell you that I'd be remiss if I didn't say, after those projects were done, when we had heavy rainfall, the manhole cover down on the corner of Tenth and Main.
A.
Or A would blow like, it's quite a sight to see, and there was sewage coming in that water, but it would only happen in the heaviest flood rainfall. So, that didn't happen this past winter. I went and stood and watched to see if that manhole was going to blow, and we had the heaviest rain in the history of the state of Washington this year. So, we have to point to that and say, well, it's better than it was, but it's still bad.
Well, like on his part, I disagreed with the engineers when they was trying to put a camera going down this way.
Yeah.
If they would have started the Oligwa, they could have found the first block.
They would have, yeah.
Period. And I'd seen them up, the cameras up this side of the railroad tracks, when it should have been down there, because Dennis Montgomery broke the bike one time, right, right by the, the, the bridge where they made him stop digging, because he was digging right across to the, what do you call it, the bridge abutment? And he hit, he hit the line, but I don't know if he ever regarded it or not.
Well, I can't speak for that.
Could we make a motion to schedule with, with the?
The man?
The guy that takes six months to maybe get here? To get the ball?
Yeah, we could, yeah, I wouldn't.
You might, I hate making suggestions, but, but just, if you're going to make a motion to do that, I'm thinking if you wanted to include also getting some bids from some other companies on our small works roster, too, and just kind of see, because if we can get somebody for a similar price and get it done faster, that may be a better solution, but just, I, we just don't know. I'm just saying, you might want to throw that in to research that as well.
Because this fellow, he's more of a handshake and a type of situation, and that's why it's so long. But I, I'm going to guarantee you, probably half the cost, but, but again, I agree with.
But if we spend money on it, we have to remember the regulations we have to follow with the smaller roster, depending on how much it's going to cost, and do we have to get three bids or not?
Sure, but there's a.
Even though we, we know he's cheaper, we may still have to get additional bids, just to show.
I agree, yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we set in place a request for a.
Authorize the mayor to.
Oh.
Engage in.
To authorize the mayor to engage in finding someone to check out our drainage, storm drain drain, at the Oligwa crossing, yeah, furthermore.
And could we add that maybe verbiage, authorize the mayor to initiate a, a campaign in the community with volunteers to begin to search for broken water lines that might be allowing rainwater to enter our sewer system? That was a long addition, but.
Boy, that is a long addition.
Are you going to go dig up F Street? Maybe?
But, so, find somebody to do some videoing, the smaller works roster, and then maybe begin to orchestrate within the community group to identify locations where I N I is entering our sewer system.
Yeah.
Okay? Then, did you capture that?
I think so, close enough.
Okay, I think that'd be a major step forward for this community, and reflect well on the council.
Okay, well, I'll second that.
All right, then you have a second, and then, so, with that, any additional commentary? Right here again, we do it. There is a second, and there is an individual in the community who would like to make the comment.
Let's let Mr. Gulf talk.
Pro Scan was the outfit that painted you down and did all the.
Pro Scan.
We had three different companies that did video on it in that project, but that was one of them, I think you read.
The last one, because that's the ones that went up our alley that tagged and told us where the transition between city and.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do have the CDs of those videos, too, so we have that as part of our historical record, if you wanted to go watch them. So, that's good. It's public record. All right, then, with that, let's put the matter to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. I'm excited about this, this could be interesting. Okay, well, all right, moving forward here, Council, item number four, to consider resolution zero seven today, 2016, the M R S C Small Works Roster Contract Renewal. This is kind of a pro forma action.
I'll make the motion that we approve, oh, should I do this? I, sorry. I just want to catch you before you made the motion, because I found a correction in the resolution in section one, that says the mayor hereby authorizes to execute the Washington Public Agency contract for small works consultant and vendors, it shouldn't say and vendors, this contract does not include vendors, so we would need to remove that. I mean, it's not critical, but it's to be correct, if we would remove it there, we would also remove the and vendor. The rosters part is okay, but the and vendor is incorrect.
About the consultant?
The consultant, small works and consultant roster is correct.
Okay.
Because it'd be flipped to the, to the contract itself, you'll see at the top, it says Washington Public Agency Contract Small Works and Consultant Roster. There is another option to have the vendors included, but we have not done that in the past, and that's not the one that's presented here, so I mistakenly left vendors.
That was a good catch, I think it is important, so.
Just to clarify that.
It's in two, two different places.
Yes, it's in the title, and then it's in section one there, just and vendor can be removed.
Okay.
And then, just FYI, I didn't get a chance to do an agenda bill for this to explain to you, but this is just a renewal of the same contract that we've been doing for more than 10 years, so, and there's nothing new in it that I'm aware of, that I was able to catch, so.
Okay, now are you ready for your motion?
Sorry. I'm, oh, never mind. I make a motion to, um, resolution number oh seven dash two oh one six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vader, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for small works consultant rosters with Municipal Research and Services Center of Washington.
Okay, I would read that, a contract for small works and consultant rosters.
Correction, and consultant rosters.
Are you comfortable with that verbiage? Mark, yeah, go ahead, I interrupted.
That was it.
Okay, then you've heard the motions submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve this resolution as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any additional commentary?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, it's so loud, doesn't it, just kind of jump.
I scared myself.
As a contractor, I have used this, and I find this small works roster to be very, very hard to use. You have to go online, and there's a lot of, I've never accomplished it, to get registered or any of the above, I find it very un-user friendly, so I just wanted to say that, just because I personally used it, so, but I'm not saying that it's not a good thing, it is a good thing.
Oh, it's essential.
Yes, it's a good thing.
Saves a lot of money, and we've not experienced that problem. They're very responsive, yeah.
The representatives from the roster have told us that if anybody does have any trouble, they will be happy to walk you through it and help you, whatever, so I can give you a phone number.
Sure, I appreciate that, yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, then, any other commentary? Hearing that, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, excellent. All right, now, item number five, Council to Consider Updated Costs for Old City Jail Repairs. I believe you finally have the most accurate of the materials inventory, the cost analysis, this is an estimate, but it does not include labor, that I, as the administrator of this, give solemn assurances what we would want to include in this. But obviously, the individual who submitted this is not voluntarily including any labor costs. So, we have that little impasse, but this ought to give you enough to work on or to discuss tonight.
I'd like to see more figures for labor and everything, before I would ever think of approving, approving the material. I want to see what the whole thing's going to cost.
Sure, yeah.
Well, and, and I'm still not sure, are we just doing the one side? Is this just the repair, the, the patch on the one side?
This is, my understanding is that this is not the repair of the beam, this is just to re-level all the posts.
Okay.
And, and we are getting to the $1,500 mark, which is where we jump into having to get three bids. Once we hit $1,500, we have to get three bids before we can.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not game for leveling the floor, all jails are supposed to be wavy. I'm game for putting a beam in.
I thought it was the beam, because it says a 16 foot, six by eight beam here, so I, I thought that that would be what we were going to.
Well.
Well, we'd have to clarify with Polo, because I, my understanding was that it wasn't.
Did you notice they're, they're requesting 110 bags of concrete?
Yeah.
It's a lot of that.
Who's going to make 110 bags of concrete?
This was, this was. Polo gave me a list of what he thought it would take, and that includes, you got to put 18 by 18 inch cement pads underneath your post.
Broaden posts.
And then, this is what he said it would take to do that, and then to re-level them to make the forms, and that's my understanding, but again, we'd have to get Polo to give us a more detailed information, because initially he was thinking he wasn't going to have to do all of this. He was thinking that, anyways, that it was going to be much simpler than this, but when he got under there, he said, whoa, we're going to have to do more, so he, this is just to give us an idea, this is not, and this is just one place, this is just to give Council something to think about and, and see that it's going to be more in depth.
He, instead of 110 bags, for heaven's sake, that's huge, he would contact cement companies.
We were just pricing it based on, yeah, he said he would need about two and a half yards, and I said, well, let's price it in the bags, and then he said, you know, anyways. Just to give you an idea what we're looking at cost wise.
We had a comment from a member of the public, if you want to entertain the comment. Council gets to decide.
Yes, and then I want to talk to the park board.
I think he was, when I heard the thing about him, it was about the, the pads for the broad post, and he had to change those out in one beam holder to make it usable. Pier blocks? Wouldn't that be the way he used it? Putting footings underneath and replacing the old piers, I guess, there was piers in there and then a beam also around the outside corners, is that right? That he called around there and said that's what you replace them with.
Okay, so you wanted to hear from the chairman of the park board?
Right, we have two of the park board out there, I'm just curious what's been, what's been talked about, are we talking about the beam?
We, we haven't really talked about the beam, or, in fact, Polo's in Seattle right now, but our five year plan, I, I think if we table it until we can get a good presentation for our five year plan for that part, it will be worth waiting on anything to the jail right now, so that we can actually do a presentation and not just throw out little things here and there, but have the whole plan out in front of you guys.
In lieu of the fact that the V C L is not going to use it at May Day, and they're the ones that typically use it, I think we should just let the park board do their five year plan, and then come up, yeah, table it, let's table it and come up with a real plan of that beam, or whatever, whatever the park board comes up with.
Is the chairman, you want to weigh in on this?
I think I said so.
Okay. All right, then, do you want to make a motion to table this conversation until we get to a, the five year plan?
Oh, certainly, I make a motion that we table the conversation of putting the beam and leveling of the old jail and repairs until the five year plan is completed, in the very near future, I hope.
I know, I've seen, I've heard them talk of it, so.
Yeah, we had a workshop, I think it was last night, and we kind of have a drawing of what we think we'd like to see over at the park.
Perfect.
It's in the office, and I think it'll be interesting. It's in the office and I think it'll be interesting, I'm sure.
Could you get a second on that question?
Not, not yet. And so you've heard the motion to table the repairs with the estimate provided until the pla, the park board presents a five-year plan for that jail facility. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'd say.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any other commentary? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Well, now, I was, we can do them separately, but these are part of the package, the six, seven, and eight. And these are long awaited. And you'll recall in our last council meeting that when Mr. Wilson raised the concern about what we're doing, about the piles of garbage and other debris that are accumulating and the abandoned houses and such. And I mentioned to you that Jennifer Robertson, our attorney, was in the process of correlating our ordinances in a way that makes them applicable and defensible. And what you see tonight is the, the outcome of her efforts. And so I am quite anxious for the council to engage in a conversation regarding these three ordinances. Because if they're approved, then we can finally begin to apply the ordinances that are in place effectively, legally, and with teeth. So with that preamble, I would invite the council to engage in a discussion of each of them.
I should like to go first. Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash oh two.
Yeah.
I don't care for the verbiage on one oh one point five, the verbiage on one oh six point four, the verbiage on one oh eight point two. There's just a whole lot of it. I, I just don't care for. I marked mine all up. There's, there are just certain things in there that I, I don't understand why you would want to go and tell somebody to put screen doors on and screens over their windows. I, I just don't see that as a part that I'm interested in doing.
It was related to businesses that sell food.
Okay, well, I still don't know that I want to go do that. Going to them, they have to have a, a screen on their window, et cetera. And then there was another one here that says, um, the heat supply. If it's not in every room of every, um, I rent a house and all three of the rooms have to be at a certain temperature. And if it's not, then, um, you have to furnish heat to the occupants thereof. And I have no intentions of furnishing any heat to any occupants thereof that I rent to. So there's a lot of stuff in here that I think in two days, I really want to decipher a little bit more, to read a little bit more. I don't know, it was just a little bit, it was way too much for me to comprehend in two days.
Yeah, you didn't have much time to, to look at.
No, we, we all work full-time, so, but, you know, by the time we get it, it just isn't enough time to, I don't know.
Was it concerned about the international?
I have all of them.
Property Maintenance Code, is that?
I have all of them marked up. I'm sorry.
I guess, I guess the concern is how, how it pick, you know, because it, it can get, you know, we're going to have what, what's it called? The person that's appointed to go check these places out is, um.
The building official?
Yeah, I, I, to me, I, I know we're all concerned with the heat up homes, the fire burned out homes and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, it's just kind of an overkill.
But this, I know this gives us our, putting and getting those places taken care of. It's just I know people that have rental properties and things like that are kind of questioning, like, like Judy, the verbiage of, of what's going to be there.
Sure, yeah, we're going to run the application across the board. Our objective is to enable us to enforce the ordinances that relate to the structures that represent a hazard health-wise and property value-wise. I hadn't discerned that it would create such issues for landlords.
And this is, and this is what, you would, you would uphold these?
Yes.
It says here, the city clerk is.
The city clerk, yeah.
Is responsible for, for upholding the.
Right, enforcing and upholding, I think it's the verbiage in one of these, which I marked mine. And then in this one, it says the mayor does it.
I see the building officials should have the authority to enforce the code.
Mayor of the city.
So, but that was changed, I believe. I don't want that.
Well, it's not marked out, Ken, so I'm just questioning.
And well, in six, two thousand sixteen oh two, the International Property Maintenance Code on page three, section one oh three point one, it says the building officials shall have the authority to enforce the code.
Are you guys looking at something different than we have?
Yeah. Excuse me, we have to get the.
One of these it says.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash oh two. Two thousand sixteen oh two, on page three, at the top, section one oh three point one.
Thank you. Okay, so the code official would.
Building official is the one.
Take stuff to you and then.
And then I'm basically the one that writes the letter.
Two sixteen oh three, yeah, this says the clerk shall have the responsibility to enforce all of the.
Where's two sixteen oh three? I'm sorry, I don't know what, what page that's on.
Um, two sixteen, on the next, I guess, the next, the next part of the package.
Oh, the next sixteen oh three, the next order.
On page three.
Okay. This one is the code, right now, the code enforcement does have me as the person who, who, basically, I'm the one that sends the letters. That's, that's my job. Yeah, that's what they're saying, that the building official brings the violations to us and then I put the letter together and then I send it to the attorney. He checks it, make sure everything's written properly according to our codes and then it's sent out.
The building official, is that someone that is appointed by the council?
Council has hired Ron Kemp, Councilman and Associates. He's our building official.
And that, that would be the.
And then if there's any appeals, it used to be that the appeals would go to the mayor and then to city council, but council adopted a hearing examiner. And so now changed the ordinance to say that it goes to the hearing examiner if there's any appeals, instead of council and the mayor, which is better for you guys, in my opinion.
Yeah, is that an impartial person in there? He's an attorney.
Uh, he is an attorney, yeah.
Outside of the city that, that is the mediator.
No, this is for appeal, any appeals, like if we sent out a notice to somebody and they said, wait, this is.
So who gets to go around and make suggestions on what?
The building official.
We have an employee, we have a contractor that we've hired. He's been working for us for a year, he's very competent. And he's a professional inspector.
He's good. And in the number four, did she find out with the mayor?
Oh, I don't know which one of those was.
Yeah, that would be, um, well, now I've lost the page.
Which ordinance are you?
It's the last one.
Page six and it's twenty sixteen oh four.
Okay, so you're back into the garbage one.
Yeah.
Garbage ordinance.
Yeah.
What page?
The six. Dispute since, with service department. It says the mayor.
Yes. So, and it, that would, disputes. If there's a dispute, then.
With Jeff Cummins.
Mm-hmm. Then I serve as the city's representative. Yeah, but it doesn't mean that I'd be their enforcer. So I'm comfortable with that.
As you see, there are a lot of, there's a lot to these three.
There are. But they, they need to be this way in order for us to be able to demonstrate that we've got the specificity needed to enforce them.
And I tried to look up the IPMC code and find out how many pages it is. I did see it, yes, that's what my other book looks like. And so this one really bothers me because I can't see it.
I have a link to it and we haven't purchased it yet because it's a couple hundred dollars to purchase.
Right, right.
And on, they give it, they allow us to look at it online for free, but we can't print it until we buy it.
I believe at one time I looked up the.
I think I can forward, I can, you can send it to me and I can forward the link to you.
I, I have it. I looked it up today. Yeah, I looked it up tonight.
Mr. Wilson wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After reading this from the other page here, it says here, recommendation motion. The city council may adopt ordinance twenty sixteen oh two or not adopt ordinance twenty sixteen oh two and give further direction to staff. I hereafter, as city councilman, make a motion that we not adopt ordinance twenty sixteen oh two and give further direction to staff or council.
What's the direction?
To get it done well.
You would like us to give you time to read it in greater detail?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then provide answers to, okay. It seems reasonable to me.
I don't think that has to be a motion.
Yeah, it's, it's a directive, it sounds to me like.
And they all three go together, is my understanding?
Yes, this is right.
So it.
For the most part.
I, I would be really happy if we could have at least the next two weeks to, to look into these. I'd like to look at them a little closer.
Do you want my opinion? I think that's very wise because it's better to work through all of these particulars upfront. And maybe we'd even want to have Jennifer Robertson come and with her legal expertise, provide some responses.
If councilwoman. Well, Andy made a motion, so.
But, but, but all that having been said, this is so important to the city of Vader. So I think it deserves the extra time, attention itself. So you've submitted a motion, a council member can't be ignored in that regard. So you've submitted a motion to not adopt the ordinance and then give further direction to the mayor and city staff to do additional research and they'll allow you time to read it. Did you capture that motion?
Okay, allow city council time to.
Yeah, read it. And as part of that direction, I, I think it would be wise to consider bringing Jennifer Robertson here to this meeting to justify her rationale behind the verbiage of these. Okay?
National expenditure optimization. Of two hundred dollars an hour.
I don't know that we need to hear her for two hundred dollars an hour, do we?
It's your call.
Congress, telecom.
Yeah, she would charge that, even with the telecom.
Okay, guys, what do you think?
I think we can figure it out, really.
I'm comfortable with that, too.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that, rather than expenditures of the attorney fees.
With that, did we get a second?
Nope.
Okay, do we have a second for Mr. Wilson's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dale. Okay, now further discussion. We have Mrs. McVeigh, who would like to be heard. Would the council care to entertain that statement?
Sometimes we're, say, not pound wise and dollar foolish or whatever. I, the attorney wrote this up and she's facing tremendous amount of experience. And I know that you're an attorney also, and, but you're not in this specialty. And she's consulting with other counties, cities, whatever. You know, I mean, she has a lot of experience. So I know nobody must expend the two hundred dollars an hour, but she wrote it, you might even write a letter. I'm just suggesting that you write a letter to her and ask her to explain the things that you come up with as a question. Even if she charges you, she's not charging travel time because you need to know if other cities, for some reason, she's trying to cover Vader and I'm coming here. And we don't have this thing kind of wonderful, do we, in Castle Rock? And you've taken a lot of time with this. I mean, a year and a half ago, I was here when you began this.
Absolutely. We've come a long ways, but that's not necessarily a bad idea. As you peruse through these documents, if you have a question, go ahead and give it to Jill and then we'll run by her and that won't incur unnecessarily that exorbitant cost.
Because you want to know the philosophy, she's moving on. She didn't do it to her Vader.
Correct.
On, the concerns seem to be related to the amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code. Who, where did the amendments come from? Who, who, were those just from our attorney or were those suggestions from our inspector?
I'm not sure.
Okay, that'd be, that's my question.
I'm not sure. I don't know what that says. I know that they use this code in other cities.
Oh, absolutely.
They're familiar with, and so I don't know who actually created them, but I know that these are copied from what other cities that they've worked in.
The additions from other cities?
Yeah.
Yeah, the international code.
And I know that Ron, that our building official requested that the council adopt this because it's, it's easier and more, and everything's all in one place for him to be able to more efficiently do the enforcement.
Yeah, we need to adopt the international code. I mean, it's just, that's just what every other city does. It's the way the country works. But it's just the amendments that we seem to have a problem with. So it'd be interesting to see where those came from.
It would be, yeah. Okay, I, I noted that we've got the two other comments. Do we want to entertain those comments? We got one, sure? So start with Hattley and then with Mrs. McVeigh.
I, I'm notoriously cheap, but I completely agree with the penny wise and dollar foolish on this issue. And Vader has gotten itself in a lot of trouble by not spending a little extra money to check things out. And I think the attorney's advice, under the circumstances with the long-range consequences of not making sure what we're doing here is going to come back to haunt us. So even if we have to spend four hundred dollars for two hours of the woman's time, I think it's well worth it in the long run, considering what's at stake if we get a cheaper point, but that's my opinion.
Okay, you've heard the, from the public? Yes.
And there's one thing that I do, I don't know if you're aware, you probably are aware, that there is a free sign, MRSC it's called, dot com. And if you do, M Mary, R Robert, S Sam, C, for free, you can look at attorneys, it's all free, that attorneys that work with every city on any topic. So you can do this yourself and have input and you can compare this attorney to what other attorneys have done in other cities. And don't think she isn't looking at us, but you pay her to, just like we do in Castle Rock. We pay our big attorney from Longview, big money, to go to that site. You can do it for free yourself.
Have we voted yet? So we can still have, can I ask one more question? Has Jeff seen this, the solid, the garbage one?
I don't believe so, no.
It doesn't change anything for him.
Yeah, it doesn't change his contract with us in any way.
Not at all, no. Yeah, the enforcement, it wouldn't involve Jeff unless the, the property owner worked out some private arrangement with. My, off the top my head response. Okay, well, then, any other observations, questions? Hearing none, then let's put this to a vote. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, excellent. We have our marching orders. We tuned. And we're down, actually, to our last item.
Well, wait a minute, that just included ordinance two thousand sixteen oh two. That's all he listed there. We still have two other ordinances to address if you want to table post for the same reason or whatever.
Oh, well, I, I included all three.
Oh, you added that? Okay, that's not what he said originally, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now item nine. The council to. The council to consider fire district number 20 request for surplus office items. You, hopefully have a chance to look at this. I don't, just so you're aware of my opinion on this, I am in the, I'm not opposed to their recommendation. I'm supportive of it. I am in the process of getting my ham radio certification, though. And, but I've been informed by Rob Snaza and Steve Mansfield that every fire station within Lewis County is getting their own specific emergency ham radio system. And they're going to be identifying three volunteers within each of those fire districts to come in in event of emergency to assist them so that they can go respond in emergencies. So the question was, would the city like to keep that ham radio or not? I initially thought that it might be helpful. We already have a CB radio system.
We have a handheld ham radio as well as this one that's in the police, old police department. So we have the two.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if they have it, our system would be redundant. But that we would have individuals who could use it. And so, with all of that being said, I would...
Well, the fire department already has a ham radio. This is a, this would just be an additional.
They're getting a new, whole new system.
This would just be an additional. And the way they explained it to me is, they said, that, oh, it says here that they can make use of it. They don't really need it, but they could make use of it if we didn't have a need or whatever.
So what are we saying here? I'm saying, let's let them have that radio system.
Oh, the radio system, oh.
We have currently what we've got, it'll be fine. And I personally would volunteer to be one of those that would come in and assist in that, you know, being the mayor, as long as I am the mayor, it makes sense that I would be on that list. If, heaven forbid, we have some emergency in the community.
Do we, do we have to surplus this and wait, or can we just give it to them?
That was my question, do we need this stuff and can we just give it away? It's our city's property, that our, our people paid for it, we can't just give it away?
You can surplus it, but it's another public entity. And historically, you have to ensure that it be conveyed at a reasonably fair market value. But it could be a dollar.
Unless it's to another public entity, then you are not required to get, to ask for funds like we have done with other entities have donated, stuff like the county donated these chairs to us and, you know, some other equipment that they've donated to us free of charge. And that's how, you can do it within the government entities.
Well, I'm glad to clarify that, because I thought that there would still need to be some financial...
No, there's no financial price that needs to be set when we're dealing with another public entity. We would need to do a resolution. If you guys approve, go ahead and donating this to them, then at the next council, maybe I'll have a resolution that says we're surplusing these items. We're already, the plan is to already surplus everything over there anyways 'cause we don't have a use for it anymore. And it's just some of it they could use, and so we can just surplus it. And this stuff we'll give to them, and the other stuff we surplus will probably go to an auction or something.
Mr. Wilson wanted to say something. You have his hand.
Well, can we be nice and say, we can't give anything away and ask them for $10?
But you can, but you can give.
We can, we can give it to the fire department, yeah, because it's a government entity. It's not a government entity, it's a, it's a public entity.
We haven't done that universally in the past with other public entities. And if you want to get, you could put a price tag on it, if you want to get $200 if you thought you'd get it and that'd cover your attorney's fees, but...
Well, some, like we, like the car, like the police car that we had before, that was worth too much to just give away to us. Other entities might, it might not be worth that much to them, and they might have given it for free. But we needed the revenue for it and...
We bought an air raider for what, from Catlina, for $200.
Yeah. So usually the higher priced items, you would still pay something for, but these are low enough and that it's not gonna probably make it, even if we were to sell them at an auction, they're still talking.
So you guys are saying that we really, we don't need the desks, the old desks and old chairs?
No.
All right, cool.
They just go in storage at this point and just take up space, so.
Back to you.
Yeah, I, I would like a big motion that we donate these, the following items to the Lewis County Fire District Number 20.
Okay, Mr. Daley submitted a motion to very graciously donate these items. And no charge to Fire District Number 20. It will certainly, I hope, score some PR points, and that was not a bad thing. So you've heard that motion. Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any additional commentary? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you. It was a very decisive action on the council. We appreciate that.
Yes.
Fantastic. And with that, we exhausted our agenda. The fire district council meeting is closed at either closing.